Let's call order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, March 14th to order. If I could ask everyone, please stand and recite the Fledge of Allegiance. Alright, good evening, everybody. If you are like me, you are realizing this school year is going to quickly go into a close here as we reach the back quarter. Okay, our, let's see, roll call.
Student Arthur.
Here.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Alex Delipali.
Here.
Zachary.
Here.
Scott Booth.
Here.
Carolyn Stedt.
Here.
Ellen Mallow.
Here.
Okay, so a note for the record, everyone is here tonight. Our agenda, we will have an educational presentation, looks like an update on the DLS, Digital Learning Strategy. Nothing really from the President tonight. We have many of our school board reps here, so we can't get to hear what's going on in the schools. The superintendent's report actually is quite extensive with a couple interesting topics. We'll approve the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed last week. Maybe that's why the month is going by so fast. Brief updates from program and personnel, brief update from facility and finance, nothing from property, price curve, seat all, nothing, right? And IASB, same news, right? And that should be it. Okay, so we will start with our educational presentation.
We are really happy to have with us tonight John Taylor and Brian Wilcox from Libertyville High School, who are going to share with us updates on the Digital Learning Strategy and the LED Center at Libertyville High School.
Thank you for having us. In case you guys haven't been to Libertyville, I've got like a little online video if you just look in here and you look around to actually see the room if you haven't been to Libertyville. Yeah, so I'll leave this here. It's got my phone in it, so don't steal it, please. You all look kind of ridiculous, but if you stand up and just look around, you'll actually see what our room looks like. There's no staff members in there, but I don't know, it might give you a good idea of what has been built. I think it does help to kind of stand up.
I can't wait to see this one.
Stuart, make sure you're filming this, okay? We'll let Scott be the guinea pig here.
It's kind of like one of those old-school viewfinders.
Yeah.
Yeah, Brian doesn't have the little like things to go in it.
I was looking for that.
Spider-Man or something? This is pretty cool.
All viewers at home, watch this one on cable.
So while that's going around, I want to just thank you for this opportunity to present to you on the current Digital Learning Strategy at Libertyville High School. My name's John Taylor, I'm one of the LED coordinators and a math teacher at Libertyville.
And I'm Brian Wilcox, and I'm one of the LED coordinators as well, and I teach driver's education at Libertyville.
So there are two main parts to the Digital Learning Strategy that we want to go over today, and the first one is going to be the Chromebooks that we have purchased for all the students at Libertyville High School. And then finally, the creation of our Professional Development Center, that Brian and myself are coordinators, along with some of the other literacy and technology coaches there. So we've purchased the Lenovo 11E Chromebooks for all the students, and we wanted to share some of these student perspectives on these actual Chromebooks. So we put out a survey, and we got some great quotes from some of the students, so I just kind of want to read through them and take the time, because I think their voice is really important to us. So one of the students, ninth grader from LHS, said, "I feel like having the Chromebook program actually enhances our academic levels. We, as a student body, are able to actually take another step further with our interaction and communication with our classes." So just as an example, this is one of the social studies classes. Students are in groups of three, collaborating on the same documents, using the Chromebooks, and just creating projects that would not be possible. They wouldn't have that level of collaboration without these devices that they now have available. Another thing they like to do and use, actually the student said it, we like to use these Chromebooks as informal assessments, and it's a great tool to kind of engage the students. So this student said, "I like the Chromebooks with all the quiz games we get to play in class to study using them. Kahoot quizzes and Quizlet Live are a lot of fun and really helped me study for tests." Just to give you perspective, Kahoot is almost like that trivia game at Buffalo Wild Wings, where you've got it on the TV, and you've got the little clickers, and you've got to click the fastest. So we play review games with that, and it gets the students really engaged with it.
So here we can see an example of some of the students that are using Kahoot and quizzes to, you know, to study their material. It's great, too, because it can be pushed out via Google Classroom, so it's a lot of fun. The top three images right here are where they're using Kahoot and quizzes. This one down here, a student is using an extension called Screencastify, and you can see a little mannequin over here to the right-hand side. He's actually working on CPR, and what they did is they used that Screencastify to video themselves being a first responder, and then they went back and they evaluated, and they critiqued themselves. The great thing about that is the video's been stored in their drive where they can access it later. As they go to access it at home, the next student quote kind of relates to that a little bit. "So, it is nice to have my own computer, because at home I don't have to share with my family. Also, it is nice to be able to have access to the Internet at almost all hours." Now, we hope those hours are conducive for learning, and they're not going to bed too late, but I can speak to the fact that when computers are, you know, few and far between at the household, there's a line waiting for them, so it's nice to have this feature for our students.
And I think of the presentation that Sean Cravere and I gave at the Board of Education last year, and John Gilliam, this is actually one of the things you brought up. You have few devices, and your kids all need access to the Internet, and this student said basically exactly what you said last year, so I thought that was good. Another thing is just the ability, all these online assignments, web-based tools that we require students to use, they need access to the Internet outside of their classroom, and now with the Chromebooks, they can do it. So this is the water polo team, they have to wait to just odd hours to get to practice, and they're working on their work, and then the mash there is up in the top. And finally, the student, "It has helped a lot with my schoolwork, because I'm able to use it and get things done after school, in between practices, or even at home." So I think that kind of shows how important these devices are. The second part of the Digital Learning Strategy for Libertyville was the creation of a Professional Development Center, which was on the little viewfinder, and that's our LED Center. LED stands for Learn, Explore, and Develop, and this, the whole kind of mission behind this center is that the goal of the LED Center is to foster collaboration, creativity, and innovation that will support our teachers in a changing environment. So we want to be available to all the staff, all the time, for anything that might come up. Just some stats on the LED Center, we've had over 1,000 interactions with teachers, 1,084, and this is via email, the LED Center, them stopping by, but in comparison to last year, we had only 393 interactions with teachers. I mean, we more than doubled it, so it's about a 176% increase over last year. So having this room available, this room that staff can come for help, and it's always staffed by one of our coaches, I think it just kind of speaks for itself, it's been very successful. We spent 16,610 minutes, and it's not hours, it's minutes, but it sounded pretty good, minutes helping the staff compared to last year, which was around 6,000. So we're, and we're not even done with the year yet. We've had 534 visits to the LED, and that's not just staff using it to grade and work on other projects, that's for them coming for help for us. And out of all the interactions we've had with staff, almost half of it has been at the center. So without the center, I don't know if the staff would actually get the help that they need to be successful.
So now we're going to talk a little bit about what's bringing them in, and there's, as you can see over here, we have the list of topics and the number of meetings as a result of, you know, what the staff was looking for for support. You can see up at the top, Mastery Manager is leading the way with 241 minutes. Google Apps really refers to anything from sheets to docs to forms, and teachers looking to dive in to utilize those more effectively in their classroom. Google Classroom has been a big push this year, we had a lot of teachers convert over to Google Classroom in the beginning of the year. It's a great way for them to push out documents and have their students work collaboratively on projects together, so that's seen quite a number of teachers coming in for that kind of support. Formative assessment, like creating paradigms, creating Kahoots, how do I do it, what does it look like, and working through that process as well. At the beginning of the year, we usually have an onslaught of people that want to update their website, and they come in and ask to, you know, update their calendars on their website, and just a couple little tricks that they may be forgotten over the course of a year. And this number down here at the bottom is our new District 128 ETC, which is our district credit course, which is being offered for GAF, for all the Google Apps for Education. So we have a number of staff that is coming in for some support with that as well. We expect the Mastery Manager number, which is currently 241, to continue to grow, as people are looking to link more of their assessments to their standards, which is going to be an important part of their student growth expectation for their evaluation. So we will be working with them and expect that to be an increase in over as well. Next, we're going to talk a little bit about Marzano Mondays. Well, as we move to our new evaluation cycle and bring Marzano into the picture, those of us who are starting our first year of our cycle right now had to pick an element or a design question which we were interested in being the focus of our next two-year cycle. With that being said, we sent out a Google Form to our staff, and they selected which elements, which design questions they thought would be most pertinent for them to gain some more insight on. And based on that feedback, we created a list of Marzano emails, where we sent them out on a Monday, and we accumulated 23 different sample lessons from a variety of disciplines, which tried to incorporate those different design questions that they were seeking more support with. In addition to that, the elements that were covered, we also increased our coverage of the literacy components, the ways of thinking, or the literacy pillars, so we tried to highlight those in our lesson plans as well, and we've created a database for all those lessons on our website. So as teachers are becoming more and more in need of looking at some Marzano lessons, they're going to have a bank where they can refer to, and maybe tweak it and make modifications to make it fit for their own.
We're continuing to have Lunch and Learners, these seem to be the most popular things to get information to the staff. Everyone loves a free lunch, so they're coming for them. Just some things that we've gone through, just like Google Classroom, we've had some geek swaps, where teachers share other teaching tips and tricks that they do in the classroom, so I think this has been really important to us and just kind of brought in our scope.
We've been focusing on a featured teacher over the last couple years as Lit Techs. This year, we've recognized five featured teachers. The teachers that we recognize are not necessarily always the most tech savvy, but they're very interested in seeking more help down at the LED and trying to use technology in an innovative way, so we've recognized them for their efforts. We've recognized, as I said, five this year, and those are typically teachers that are coming down and using us as a resource. We know that there's a lot of other outstanding work that's being done that we don't see, they don't come down to the LED perhaps, so we started a new campaign that was just entitled Cats for Colleagues, where we pushed it out and said, "Hey, did you witness your colleague doing something special? Did they use an innovative tool in their classroom, or did they just do something outside of the common Call of Duty? Did they go above and beyond?" And we have been fortunate, all staff recommendations, we've recognized five over the last two months, and it's just clearly a Google Form that teachers have the opportunity to complete, fill out, and recognize their colleagues. So it's been great to see that kind of support from one another.
And then finally, as teachers, we need to grow ourselves, so not everyone knows everything, so we established Lit Techs, Teaching Lit Techs, so basically teachers teaching teachers every Tuesday. We've gone through so many different topics, but it's just kind of great and a good experience for teachers to be exposed to all kinds of different technology, literacy, I mean, we all don't know everything, so it's important our teachers learn from each other.
Well, we're all kind of in a March Madness type of a mood right now, as we have the NCAA tournament upon us, but we thought it'd be a great way to go into this week right before spring break to do some fun competition-based experiences for faculty. The main goal of our March Madness department competition here is just to get more people into the LED, so that they can be exposed, and I will say that that goal of getting more people into our room worked great. Today was our first day of competition, where we had a little dart competition, and we had 154 staff members come down. So that was outstanding to see everybody there, everyone was having a great time, but in addition to that, more than on one occasion, we had people say, "Hey, you know, now that I'm here, I have a question for you," and that was ultimately our goal. Let's go into spring break, let's have some fun, and let's also encourage others to come through these doors and see what we have to offer, and I think it's going to continue to promote the collegiality that we want to have and that atmosphere that it's a, hey, let's come in and let's use this LED as a place to learn, explore, and to develop.
Our final project for the year was the creation of our EdTech credit program running through the district. So we spent almost three to four months collaborating with the Vernon Hills Tech coaches in creating this curriculum for Google Apps for Education. We created this to be an online class for professional development, and what the staff do is they register with us, and they go through these "I can" statements, like "I can do this, I can do that," and then they complete a project to demonstrate that they've learned the material. It's been a great way to expose the staff to all kinds of new different tools and the way that you can really use Google Apps for Education in the classroom. It's been great to be able to collaborate with Vernon Hills. We have a Google Hangout, like a video chat every other Tuesday, and we just talk about how can we increase our numbers, what new techniques they're doing, we share our own. To this day, we have 70 staff members at Libertyville who have signed up for this. About half of them have completed the first project, and the other half are waiting till they're ready, till maybe their season stops or spring break.
What we see on the horizon is a need for continued Marzano support, so we plan on continuing to develop lessons to add to our portfolio of lessons. We also anticipate a need for supporting our staff as we move into para, and how that looks with Mastery Manager, not only linking the standards, but then processing reports. There's going to be a little bit of a learning curve with that, so we anticipate being there for that support as well. And we're currently working on another class to be offered next year, trying to train staff to become Google Certified Educators. With that being said, we are in the midst of developing that cohort right now. As a group, we are meeting on Fridays, and we have a 10-week cycle in which we are creating new projects, so that hopefully next year we'll be ready to kick off with yet another offering through our D128, our D128 University.
Overall, just thank you for this chance to share with you. I think you guys have given us the opportunity to just be there for our staff, and I think it shows, the stats show, and the Chromebook usage with the students, it's been a great thing. Great job.
Questions, comments from the board?
I want to make a comment, after seeing what you guys are doing and having some conversations with your colleagues here at Vernon Hills, this is the way to get it done, this is the way to, you're using the same tools, you're reaching out, you're providing a comfortable space for the teachers to come share, learn, bring it back to the classroom, make it fun, it's all those, all those things put together, it's really, I'm so happy to see this. I'm also very pleased to see the numbers up front, you're talking about the data, and we're looking at how much, you know, increase in usage of the room, how many, that's wonderful, because we can see it's tangible, you know, facts that we can use to show, to demonstrate exactly what's going on and how it's going on. I love the little glasses. What somebody didn't do, what most people didn't do, you've got to look up or down, it looks all the way around, it's very cool. So when we start handing those out to all the students, then that would be really cool, too.
Cool, away from the days of...
Yeah, yeah. And lastly, I'll never think about Marzano in the same way again.
Other questions, comments? Marina and John, anything you guys want to add?
Yeah, you guys have been instrumental in thinking of creative ideas, training staff, making it a place that teachers want to come, and for all the reasons you said, because they can learn quick, they can get focused on what exactly they need at that point in time with the small time they have, so it's been really cool. And this week is going to, I'm looking forward to this week, I did play the darts, too, so I'm in your stead.
Can I just ask, so, you know, roughly a year into this thing now, I mean, what are the key lessons learned, and what holds us back from doing even more? Or what would you like to do if you didn't have some constraints on you, if you have any, maybe you don't?
I think what, as far as, we don't need any devices, I guess. We don't need money to buy things for ourselves, for the students, for the staff.
Into the budget season, so.
Yeah, sorry, I think we're doing great. I think everything we have is what we need to be successful. I think what you've already given us is that flexibility, that ability to create our own professional development, the classes that we've created. I think that continued flexibility from you as a board is, that's how we are able to grow the way we have. So I think that has been really helpful, and your support, you've been there for us, the administration's been there for us.
I think this has been, it's been an awesome year on this whole program, and I think I said this before, and I thought you told me, you know, there's got to be someplace where we can present our learned experiences and share this, because I think we've been fortunate to be able to have the resources we've had to do the things we do, and I'm sure there's a lot that we've learned that can be really helpful to districts that may not be so fortunate. Because I think it's been a, you know, benchmarking kind of program.
I ran into a teacher not too long ago from another school district, and I actually connected her with John, because she was taking on this, and she actually got the job, she was applying for, yeah, she did, she was applying for the job. But one of the things she said she didn't like about what their district was doing is they were requiring teachers to go. And she, and I told her, I said, "You're going to get his statistics this week, I'm going to ever send you those, you don't need to require people to go. In fact, it's better when you don't, because they're coming for the things they want, when they want, they talk to each other, you don't need to require them to come." So I think the way you guys are doing it, and the way you have allowed us to do it, is very much meeting the needs of our teachers.
John, why don't you guys, what does your day look like? What does your schedule look like? So, how much are you working with teachers, how much are you back in the classroom doing what both of you do? Why don't you just review kind of what your schedule, both of you, what your teaching schedule looks like?
Sure. I'm in the LED Center for three full periods, just available for teacher help. One of those periods, we have all of our coaches come together, and actually, we have a meeting every single day, all 12 of us. I think that's extremely necessary for all of us to be on the same page. What projects do we want to go over? What have you noticed with the staff? What do we need to do differently? So that's important. I also teach two, I teach for two periods, but it's really one class, I teach for two periods. And then the other off-period, I'm basically prepping for our projects, our March Madness, or Twitter feeds, or whatever we see in the horizon. And then I eat lunch, somewhere in there.
On a good day, right?
On a good day.
On a good day. And Brian, how about you, what's your day look like?
I teach three classes, and then I'm in the LED for three periods as well. So, and then we do try to get together for the Hangouts and so forth with Vernon Hills, and we do that at a time that's convenient for both, so, but it's been outstanding. It's invigorating, you know, when you look at these stats and you see the utilization of that room, the hybrid, the mix between professional development and then technical support, it's just been awesome. So it's a lot of fun to be a part of that, and have the flexibility to be creative, it's been so awesome. I think one of the things that we've noted is that we have Lit Techs representing more departments this year, and the departments that are now being represented by a Lit Tech, that kind of support back to their department has increased dramatically, so continued support in that regard would be outstanding as well.
Great. That's probably one of the real advantages we also have, even internally, we can benchmark against two different buildings, so, you know, that's probably also a nice thing that we do, so.
They're being humble, but in regards to your comment about presenting this work at conferences, we are doing that in very many different ways. John has presented, Joe O'Brien and Sean Cravere are at the Google Summit this week presenting, right? So we are sharing this work very broadly and in many different forms, as well as seeking learning, so that as Lit Techs and as coaches, they can share new learning with all those that come into the LED Center, too.
And I certainly hope that I emphasize, it's a lot of these behind-the-scenes things, I mean, it's not the Chromebooks, it's not the slides, it's not, you know, it's all the behind, first of all, you've got to put some resources on it to make it happen, it's just not going to happen by osmosis, all right? And second of all, it's all the way you structured it, the way you split up your time, who you put into the roles, probably who you wouldn't put into the roles, all those kinds of things I think would be very valuable to anybody that's considering it.
Great job. Anybody else?
Great creativity, great fun, for these people.
So I have one challenge, we have a couple lunches left, yeah, right, April, May?
Yes.
Okay. So I would like to hear, you know, one year post Chromebooks, how your experience has been, I'm going to cover them in lunch sometime. Okay? We'll dedicate one of our lunch sessions to any and everything that you really liked or didn't like about Chromebooks. All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, great job.
All right, school board representatives.
So first, let me talk about academics. So AP season has officially started, and most students are hopefully all registered, because if not, there's a huge wait fee, so I'd hope everyone's registered by now, and then hopefully people will start to study either during spring break or sometime after, because it can, like, the work can really add up, so hopefully that will begin soon. And a lot of teachers are going to go to AP sessions after break, too. Wise team placed second at the sectional competition, and then after winning regionals, our math team will compete in the state competition in May. LHS celebrated International Language Week last week with performances by a German folk pop band and a variety of international foods that were offered during lunch offers, lunch hours. We'd like to congratulate the Academic Decathlon team for placing sixth this past weekend. And then for athletics, spring sports are now in full swing, with most, if not all, teams already finishing their tryouts and moving on to regular season sports. A lot of teams were able to have enjoyable outdoor practices last week, so are hoping that the weather shapes up again for them soon. And boys lacrosse is their first game this Thursday at home. I think boys baseball had a game, too, today, so that's pretty nice to see. Oh, they won? Oh, nice, congrats. Yeah. That's nice that they were able to play outside them. But Best Buddies attended the Best Buddies prom hosted by Vernon Hills this past Saturday, and it was really fun, it was an awesome way for local Best Buddies chapters to mingle with each other and just like meet a bunch of new people, and it was a really fun time, there was dinner and dancing, and it was really a nice event. And then Best Buddies at LHS also had a successful spread the Word to Edmord campaign last week, where we sold T-shirts and had students sign a pledge to stop using the R-word, and that was really nice to see. Students come out to like support our kids in special education, and just like, just support everyone and like spread the message of kindness, so that was really nice to see.
All right, so the LHS Interact Club is currently collecting progresses to donate to the Glass Slipper Project, and that project is basically an organization that allows girls who cannot afford a progress to get one for the dance, and that will be in May. And the Winter Orchestra Concert will take place this Wednesday at 7:30 in the LHS Auditorium. And planning for the annual LHS Color Run is officially underway, and the LHS Student Council has chosen the charity for this year, and it will be the Michael Manners Foundation, and that is a local foundation that helps to spread awareness for brain cancer, and it also provides support for those suffering from brain cancer in the form of grants.
When is the Color Run?
End of April, I think.
I'm not actually sure. Go back to you. Are you going to run it?
I might this year. I might.
It's fun.
Yeah, last year the weather wasn't out, you saw the birds during the run.
So the Libertyville Environmental Action Force Club held its Green Living Fair on March 12th, and the LHS Fine Arts Department presented the Fresh and Sophomore Play Brothers Grimm on February 27th. The LHS Choirs held their winter concert on March 2nd, and also the Finance Department held the North Suburban Wind Ensemble Concert on March 13th. And the ISAsAE chose several D128 artists from Vernon Hills and Libertyville to be featured in one of their shows. And Slant of Light, which is LHS's literary arts magazine, is officially available for pre-order on the LHS Book Store for only a dollar, and hard copies will begin to be sold when students come back from spring break for Writers Week, and Writers Week is going to be the week after spring break, and basically it's just a week full of writers and musicians coming in to present to students, and it's a really cool way for kids who are interested in writing to solidify their interests, or also for kids who may have ever thought about writing before to actually get exposure to it. And lastly, I'd like to wish everyone here a happy Pi Day. Celebrations around LHS were mellow, but some classes brought in Pi to celebrate.
All right, so moving on to Vernon Hills, we have a lot of recognition of students today. So first off, we had 29 juniors who were selected to advance to the Regional History Fair Competition, which will be held later. And also, a lot of students had the opportunity to...
opportunity to participate in the 2015 Smoke Signals Fire and Safety Burn Prevention Video Contest, where they were able to win a monetary prize. And we had, first place was Katrine Mamulashvile, sorry for pronouncing that. Second place was Caleb Drew Peter Lipinski. Third place was Carlos Marin, and the runner-ups were Kelly Davis and Lexi Reich. So, good on them. Also, we had several Cougar Class Acts Awards, and those were, those went to Yulia Bojarsky, Kenny Dantez, Marissa Ebbler, Emily Shirello, Skylar Torri, Mario Gonzalez, Kelly Starikovich, Dylan Burnett, Johnny McDonald, and John Powell. We also had our FCCLA members who qualified for state, so we'd like to congratulate Mandy Gilchrist, Daisy Castillo, Lauren DiBetro, Amanda Carcella, and Milan Aguilar. And then finally, we had student representatives from the VHS Muslim Student Association, Black Student Union, and Latino Alliance, who shared their experiences with VHS staff during a lunch learn program held this week at the school to bring a cultural awareness. So, that was good.
In academic news, the Vernon Hills Wise Team took first in their revision at the sectional competition held here at Vernon Hills this past Saturday. Eleven individual students took home medals in six different events, including math, computer science, biology, physics, English, and chemistry. And as I mentioned, their math team took first place, ours took second. We should both be moving on to the state competition in May, so we'll see what happens there.
Were you first and second in a home-hosted competition? Is that what I heard?
First and second in the competition for regional math team hosted at Stevenson.
Oh, it was at Stevenson, yeah.
Yeah. And then, first weekend in May is the state competition at U of I. And so we're hoping to.
And LHS will win that one.
We have a long history of, we have a long history of first and second finishes there between the two schools over the last 10 years, so.
It flips your.
Justin, we're moving away.
Yeah, it's all good.
Not too much sports news so far for the season. Most sports, or all sports have started up already. We've all had the option to get outside, too, which usually the weather does not permit that, which is wonderful. And so most teams will start competing in meets and games either this week or after spring break. And the weather, as I mentioned, is phenomenal. In fine arts news, as our Libertyville reps mentioned, the North Suburban Wind Ensemble Concert was held this past Sunday night, yesterday evening. It was directed by Vernon Hills Band Director Randy Sundell, and several Vernon Hills and Libertyville teachers and other residents participated in the ensemble as well. Saturday, March 5th, so two Saturdays ago, was the district's annual solo and ensemble competition held at Libertyville High School this year. Choir, band, and orchestra students played in various ensembles, along with many doing solos, for judges that would critique performance and provide constructive criticism for improvement. The event is always a great opportunity for individual and group development in both high school, in both high school fine arts departments. This coming Thursday is the next orchestra concert here in the Vernon Hills Auditorium, featuring senior soloist Finley Lau playing Beethoven's Fifth Piano Concerto. I've heard him rehearsing for it. It's gonna be awesome.
In more fine arts, the spring play is Is He Dead?, which is by Mark Twain, that's adapted by David Ives, and it's a farce, so that's gonna be at the end of April. And rehearsal's just started. And it's a cast of 12 people. And the orchestra is going to Cuba for spring break, so I know they're all very excited about that. In student activities, 50 students from VHSVIP, which stands for Voices in Prevention, performed skits for over 150 5th graders at Elementary South recently. And then in first class, our last lesson was hashtag VH Give Hope. And we're supporting our sister school in Uganda, and we're trying to raise money this week in the foyer with this change competition between classes. And we're trying to provide desks, and like, teacher desks for the new classroom building that we have for them.
What is the change competition?
There's, like, there's a jar for each class, and if you put in pennies and dollars, it's positive. Then if you put in silver, like, dimes and nickels and quarters, it's negative. So you put silver in the other classes, and pennies in paper in your own class. And then Student Council counts it at the end.
Do juniors currently have a negative balance?
The juniors currently have a negative balance. I was just informed.
Just so the juniors know, right?
The seniors are winning, too.
Yeah, so it's very exciting.
Alright, anything else? Alright, so before we move on, just one comment. So we are nearing that point of the year where we will be looking for next year's, perhaps, I believe, correct?
Yep.
So I just wanted to mention that to everybody here at the table. Anybody who would like to participate in that process, or you can let Denise know, and then we'll figure out how to schedule it.
It's pretty awesome, right?
It is awesome. And I've done it, I mean, I'm more than happy to invite anyone else to do it, either in my place or with me, whatever we do. It's a wonderful morning. We used to have two stu- reps, right?
We had one.
We used to have one, and we went to, we have three.
We had one in school and an alternate, this is a reflection on how difficult and challenging it is. But it's a great one, alright? So anybody that's interested, let me know. And I think we're gonna cut over in May, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Alright, great, great job. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay, first up, more good news from our students and staff. The students have mentioned several of these, and I wanna make sure we get names in, so I'll try not to repeat unless we're adding names. First of all, LHS Senior Drops of Ink Editor-in-Chief Hannah Boufer has been named the 2016 Illinois Journalist of the Year by the Illinois Journalism Education Association, a branch of the National Junior Education Association. As the winner, Hannah will receive a $300 prize and will be the Illinois representative in JEA's National Level Journalist of the Year Contest. She will be honored at the IG, IJEA banquet this spring in Springfield, as well as at the National Banquet in Los Angeles in April. The LHS Academic Decathlon Team finished sixth out of 40 teams in the state competition held Saturday, March 12th, at Northeastern Illinois University in Chicago. Team members were Katherine Lu, Jared Huch, Madison Hedland, Jennifer Graham, Anthony Venturi, Griffin Farrell, Anne Lancaster, Tamara Alec, Nick Zanzi. The team is coached by physics teacher Mark Busing. Individual medal winners were Tamara Alec, bronze in interview, Jennifer Graham, bronze in interview, and Griffin Farrell, gold in interview. Following LHS students were named March Students of the Month, Jason Edmonds, Grace Kennedy, Sarah Hoyer, Victoria Moi, Chloe Latka, Jessica Foo, Shana LaGlu, Katie Lund, Sarah Townsend, Emery Orlando, and Jacob Rodolphy. At regional competition, several members of the LHS and VHS Family Career and Community Leaders of America, or FCCLA, qualified for the state competition to be held April 7th tonight in Springfield. District 128 medalists were, and VH, from VHS in clothing, Mandy Gilchrist and Daisy Castillo, gold in apparel construction and foods. Laura DiPietro, gold in food production, relish tray. Also in foods, Amanda Varela and Milan Aguilar earned a silver in pastry arts and cookie decorating. I think we need, you know, we need some practical application here some night in the world.
We'll need, or just at that.
Can we handle that now? Can we get a demonstration? From LHS and Children's Literature Presentation, Brooke Zant and Mallory Paquin, gold, received the gold and also Most Outstanding. Nicole Axe and Barbara Garcia-Sam also earned a gold. In preschool lesson, Julia Therau, Kirsten Thompson, Maggie Rizley, Emily Jenner, and Becca Richter earned a gold. In foods, Whoopi Montoya earned a bronze in fondant cakes. Anna Lisa McMichael earned a silver in fondant cakes. Mia Clark earned a gold and a Most Outstanding Student in fondant cakes. And Amy Flanagan earned a silver in frosted cakes. In clothing, Pyra Pan and Anna Mackey were selected for the star event for clothing construction. Anna Mackey also earned a gold and Most Outstanding Student in clothing construction and lined garments. And Ashley Crock earned a silver for clothing construction in lined garments. Actually, amazingly talented students. The Illinois High School Art Exhibition, IHSAE, held its opening and awards presentation on Sunday, March 6th, at Zhao Bi Art Center in Chicago. Ninety high schools from Chicago and Northern and Central Illinois submitted works for display in the show. From those submissions, 450 works were chosen, five to six from each school, for display and the opportunity to win additional awards. Ten student artists from Community High School District 128 had works selected for the show. In addition to having their artwork on display, the student work was viewed by 40 universities and colleges, along with other prestigious art schools from across the country, that were in attendance and awarded scholarships to deserving students. Congratulations to the following LHS and VHS students accepted to the show. From LHS, Abby Meyer, Maria Muniz Ruiz, Emily Schuler, Maria Speck, and Nate Switzer. From VHS, Yulia Bojarsky, Anya Capols, Daniel Day, Amber Hyer, and Sophia Ufa. In addition, District 128 students received the following honors. Abby Meyer, Summer Studio Scholarship to the American Academy of Art in Chicago. Nate Switzer, Summer Pre-Collage Program Scholarship to Pennsylvania Academy of Fine Arts, as well as art scholarships to Ball State University, although he is only a sophomore. Maria Speck earned a gold medal in the drawing category. This really equates to a state runner-up, and also comes with a $300 monetary award. Sophia Ufa earned a Summer Studio Scholarship to the Milwaukee Institute of Art and Design in Milwaukee. And Daniel Day earned a $3,000 fine art scholarship to Millikan University in Decatur. LHS student artist Warren Taylor received a gold medal, and VHS student artist Bobby Neal, Shana Gao, and Ryan Priestus received silver medals in the 2016 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Since 1923, the awards have recognized teenagers from across the country. Nearly 320,000 works of art and writing were submitted by students in grades 7 through 12 this year. As national medal recipients, the D-128 students placed among the top 1% of all submissions. The national ceremony at Carnegie Hall in New York will be held on Thursday, June 2nd. Student and Amy, students in Amy Holt's Firds and Dennis Duffy's Government Classes at LHS had a real-world opportunity to contribute to the Libertyville Downtown Transit Oriented Development Plan. These students met with village representatives to offer feedback on the future development of the downtown area. The Illinois High School Football Coaches Association has named retired LHS football coach Randy Kuzieski to its Hall of Fame inductees for the class of 2016. Coach Kuz, who coached for 34 years, and had a head coaching record of 133 wins and 58 losses, will be honored at the, at the annual meeting launching on April 2nd in Champaign. So congratulations to Kuz, and certainly all our other students. And one other very special thing that Mary Todrick, who's not able to be with us tonight, brought to my attention today is LHS graduate Pippa Sue. Some of you are aware that she's performing in New York and has been on Broadway. Ashley was part of a group, I'm assuming from Broadway, that performed for the First Lady at the White House. So, if you, yeah, I think it was today. If you go, I don't have a link for you, but I'm sure if you look that up, it's pretty amazing. They picture Pippa Ashley on the stage with Michelle Obama, and just a cutout of a kind of fun tape that they did before their performance. So, pretty amazing journey from Libertyville High School for Pippa to where she's at now. It's really kind of cool. So, congratulations to her. Several other things on the superintendent's report tonight. First of all, as the board noted from our committee meeting, this is the time of the year that we do our Illinois High School Association Membership Renewal for 2016-17. That's included in your packet this month, so I would ask for a recommendation to approve that renewal.
I make a motion that we approve the renewal for NHSA dues.
So.
Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Deli, Howie?
Aye.
Kurti?
Aye.
Luz?
Aye.
Lusted?
Aye.
Power?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. As the board knows from conversation with you, I think, probably since late winter into January, we, the administration has been looking at for, really since last year, how we might restructure our basic fees. As all the parents in the audience know, you get your fees, you pay your fees, and then four to five to six weeks later, you get another bill for a language class, et cetera, or if they're participating in something. So as we presented to the board over the last couple of months, we made a recommendation that we actually go to a flat fee, exclusive of a few things that parents will continue to pay for. And the design of that was not to raise fees, was to provide one fee payment structure for payments for parents, and to make it more convenient, frankly, bring our fee structure up to speed. The other thing that's important to note here is this is not raising fees. We have not recommended, nor has the board, or has the board asked us to look at raising fees. I've been in the district 11 years, and we have not raised fees, and that's a good thing for our taxpayers, I think, moving forward. But I think Pat had asked us probably last month if we could just take a look at comparison of where our fees stand. So Al reached out to some comparable districts in the neighborhood here, and we've got several areas that we can take a look at our fees, and I'll let Al walk us through that. So, Al, go ahead.
We just ranked the comparable districts, and you see there on the, under total fees, Libertyville and Vernon Hills, if you compare all the other five columns to the right of that, add those up, Libertyville and Vernon Hills still ranks the lowest among those comparable districts that you see there. And the superscripts on each of the, each of the values there, the dollar values, are where they rank. So, the left-hand column under total fees, seven is the lowest, one is the highest. And then you can see the same is true for basic fees, activity pass, athletic fees, parking fees, and driver education fee. The basic fee, you see some other averages and estimates, and it's a little difficult because every district's basic fee may include different things, and so it's hard to figure out exactly what that is. But you see, even adding the $50 Chromebook fee into the basic fee, we still come up competitive with all the other districts. And as Prentice said, the important thing to note is that we are not raising the fees, we're just consolidating, consolidating fees for the convenience of our parents.
What, I'm sorry, I can't read our total.
What's that?
Six, six hundred.
If you look at total fees, just to read down, and maybe for the audience at home, the total fees column, you will notice $690 for Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School. That ranks seventh of the seven comparable districts, meaning one is high and seven is low. And as you go across the other columns, basic fee required, you know, activity pass, which we do have here, is $75, which, you know, still ranks pretty low. Athletic fee per sport, okay, you can see that we ranked sixth out of seventh at $40. Parking fee, we ranked seventh out of seven, and that runs as high as $1,308 at Lake Forest. And our driver's ed fee also ranks seven. So, we're in a position with our fees that, you know, in comparison in this area in Lake County, that in many were the lowest, if not next to the lowest.
The appropriate fee at Lake Forest.
Pay $1,300 for the indoor parking space.
Thank you.
People on Lake Forest.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Yes, and, and just to reiterate what Al said, based on our conversation with the board over the last month, we did just take the $50 annual Chromebook fee. The fee that we recommended was $200 after doing a lot of averaging of fees that, you know, most basic fees that our families pay. And then in conversation with the board, we just went ahead and added the $50 Chromebook fee to that. So it's, you know, that made it, yeah, made it $250.
Just to clarify, just to clarify, students will still purchase some personal items, like their PE uniforms, their own calculators, things like that. So these are, we've consolidated the classroom fees, the consumable materials that students have had to purchase throughout the school year into one payment. Now that no longer will exist for parents.
So the board, as I, last month, you authorized the new fee structure, and again, as Pat noted, this is just a follow-up, just kind of see where we're at and what it looked like.
Yeah. Not for this year, but at some point, our driver's ed fee is actually unusually low.
And driver's ed fee, the maximum the state allows is $350. So you see the, you see the.
The governor is talking about changing.
They're looking at some waiver possibilities that local districts could decide on, and that would be mandated for every district, but local districts could decide on potentially some driver's ed offerings and also physical education opt-outs or exclusions.
And any idea what is the private market cost for driver's ed about?
Wait, I just enrolled, I just enrolled my kid in the gold package.
Was that for classroom and driving?
That was a.
Classroom and driving?
That was classroom and driving, and she got a pretty good package, and she needs a lot of practice.
Okay.
I know, but you know.
You know, Alan. Okay, does that help?
That's very good, that was great. Thank you very much.
All right, great. So nothing else to do with this, you approved a fee structure.
By the way, any reason why not, can you upload both sides of the website in case you may?
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
I think that's a good thing.
I just, in case everybody's moving into town, they want to know about fees.
But I think under total fees.
You know, they just moved to Lake Forest and Lake Forest Pass, and also realized what a good deal of Vernon Hills.
Because at first, it looks like that's the one they're paying, and I went, holy cow, they have to pay $690. It was really $250. But the total, under total fees, I would put required and optional, because it took a while.
Over four-year averages.
Over four years, oh.
Oh.
Average per year.
Right. Oh, I didn't even get, okay.
Okay, so we can tweak that, and Al's been working with Mary on a communication rollout, so the parents will know before fee payment this summer that, what the new structure will be. Okay, anything else on that?
Good job.
Okay, brand and property plan update. Speaking of starting athletics, it's been really great to drive by Libertyville High School, as Scott and I were talking last week, and to see the lacrosse players out there actually using the field. Our goal, as the board and maybe the community will remember, when we started this project, was to have it ready to go, and winter broke this year. Fortunately, we had a pretty mild winter, but because of the all-purpose surface, that allows, you know, immediate functionality. And when I was driving by LHS the other day, there were actually two lacrosse teams practicing sideways on the field, which is how, you know, the field was designed and working with Bryant, Kelly over at LHS, so it's been really great. Just a follow-up on a conversation that we've had over a couple of meetings for the community, there was a concern raised about the amount of space between the end line on the long football field and the fence. There is no room to expand that area with the parking lot and the space on the other end. So Mark has been working on some alternatives, taking some suggestions from Alex, and has been working in alternatives that during football season, there would be some kind of matting placed on that fence, kind of crash padding, if you think of it that way, that would be used during football season and then taken down, stored in our storage building in the offseason. So Mark is having conversations with the village at this point to see what kind of process that, you know, we might need to go through to make that happen before football practice rolls around next fall. I think we all agree that we'd rather be safe than sorry there with about ten feet of space, although there are some other fields, older fields, that have that kind of space. But in the event that someone were to go into that fence, have a head injury, or stick their arm through the fence, you know, and cause an injury, so that was a great suggestion. Karen, I think you actually brought that up from conversation with a couple of folks in the community that have some knowledge of the insurance business and liabilities. So Mark is following through on that, and we'll keep you, the board, up to speed, and then we'll report out to the community. Is there any more to add at this point, Mark? Okay.
If you make an offer, then they push back, or?
Neither of them yet.
How about, you know, we were wondering how many lacrosse balls ended up over the fence, is that any?
Well, Scott said he got hit by one the other day, but I think he was joking.
I was joking.
Or they do it with Scott.
Yeah, yeah, me. So I think he was joking. But as far as I know, we could ask Maria, as far as I know, we haven't had any reported lacrosse balls, you know, kind of whack a car on 176.
Baseball, most.
Yes, if you park next to the baseball field, don't do that. Even with the 30-foot netting there, it's.
Well, I have a little chip in my windshield, so I purposely parked the car hoping it would break, so.
But we're not going to help you out, Scott, I'm just telling you, okay? So, okay. North Chicago School District 187, yeah, Karen, go ahead.
Anything on the memorial thing?
Yeah, remember, we're going to start meeting after spring break.
No, I didn't.
Yes. So after spring break, we'll put a small working group in the district together. Mike Henderson, our architect, has given us some ideas that we could do for the threshold, spending threshold that you guys had given us back in the fall, which was $50,000. And we think, based on just some initial designs, just to look at, see what we could do for that kind of mood, that we'll be able to have something that will be, you know, nice and memorable for the, for the community in the area. And that will be located someplace on, I guess, the new grassy knoll at the end, at the western end of the property there, since we didn't have to put drainage there. So that'll be a nice area for people to walk their dogs and have a picnic if they want to and hang out there. So we still got some green space out of our green space project, which is good, so thanks for the reminder, I should have mentioned that. North Chicago School District 187, just want to take a couple of minutes and review again what the situation is with that. In January, the contiguous districts to North Chicago, which would be to the east, Lake Bluff Elementary, Lake Forest High School, and then to the north, Oak Grove, and then District 128, started in a series of meetings with the executive director representing the state-appointed board at North Chicago. And here's the situation again, just to bring the community up to speed, the board asserted this before. There is a charter school in the district at this point, and it has about 500 students. The same charter company is looking to open a second school at the campus. In addition, the state has notified North Chicago that they will no longer be receiving a special allocation from the state, since the state took the district over three years ago. And if the student population in the district falls under 20% of the kids who are attending, that are children of military personnel at Lake, Great Lakes Naval Station, then they would lose Super Federal Impact Aid that has helped North Chicago keep going. The result of those three things together are, is it puts North Chicago in a very tenuous financial position moving forward. And that could result in, if there's not some changes and interventions, and I'll mention in a minute, that could result in, you know, North Chicago not being able to operate financially, you know, in 18 or 19. And the way state law and the Illinois School Code covers that is if a local district dissolves, the Lake County Regional Board of Education trustees, that's an elected body, would have sole authority to decide how that district was annexed out or broken up. In our terminology, we would say de-annexed. And the contiguous districts around that would be impacted by that. So we met with Dr. Martindale several times, the contiguous district superintendents, to look at their situation and see in detail where they're at. But those three things together are not good for North Chicago. The tragedy of the situation is since the state took North Chicago over three, over three years ago, disbanded their elected board, appointed a state-appointed school board, and a state-appointed financial oversight board, they've made many cuts, stabilized district financially, but more important, for the first time in years, student achievement and, and under metrics are moving forward. So the real tragedy of this is the state has made a significant investment in North Chicago. The district is actually starting to move forward, the stabilize is moving forward, and it looks like right now the state's going to pull the plug on their end of kind of the special allocation that they're going to have. So Pat attended a meeting with me of the mayors of the villages at the school district, resided in, all the superintendents, of course, school board presidents, about a month ago. And the mayors were going to have some follow-up meeting with the mayor of North Chicago, moving around, and then Pat and I will both be on a kind of a steering committee, if you will, or a task for us to look at what options there are moving forward. If, with the status of a charter school, since we met last week, is this, the local board at North Chicago denied the expanded charter in North Chicago. Through three large public hearings there, there was virtually not one resident of North Chicago came and advocated for a second charter school in the district. So their local board, if you will, denied the charter school's request to expand and start a second 500-student elementary, you know, K-8 charter school at North Chicago. What will happen next, or what's already happened, is there was some negotiation to see if they could go to a smaller charter, which would not have the major impact that having a larger charter would at North Chicago. Those negotiations apparently have not gone well, so the Learn Charter has appealed to the Illinois State Charter School Commission. They have 45 days to conduct the hearing and in 30 days to make a ruling on whether they're going to let the charter school go or not. So we've got, you know, essentially a 75-day, plus or minus a few days, since they filed this, to help support North Chicago if we can. And our position, position at the board and administration has staked out here is that, you know, we believe the kids in North Chicago should get the same great education and have the same great opportunities that our kids have in District 128. And they should be able to do that at a neighborhood, okay, District 187 school. Almost all parents would prefer that their students are going to a school that's close to home. And so that's our basis of support for the district. So at this point, you know, there will be a number of meetings moving forward that I'll be reporting out on, not only to the board, but to the community at our board meetings, and we will see, you know, where that goes in the near future. But, you know, we've really been integrally involved in this conversation for the past few months, since it looked like it was going to become a reality. So that's where we're at right now. Any questions from the board? The only new piece of information for you is that the charter school has actually appealed to the Charter School Commission. Now, one question the community might have, why would the Charter School Commission grant a second charter school if that meant that North Chicago would eventually go under financially? Just so you know, the intent of charter school law in Illinois was never to, okay, be the disbanding of a district financially because the granting of a charter school. That has never been part of the conversation and part of the legislation. So the Charter School Commission is appointed by the governor. Our board knows, and if you read the paper, that generally speaking, Governor Ronder is a supporter of charter schools and school choice, but this has a very unique set of circumstances. This is unlike no other situation in the state, given the military base, the special aid, the state taking over the district, you know, all of those things are really special factors in North Chicago. So, you know, that's where we stand at this point. Pat, is that what everything that you remember?
Yeah, you know, it seems even in the national political debates now, you're nor a charter school, and the momentum seems to be building there. It doesn't, it doesn't sound favorable.
Yeah, and the data, the data generally speaking is not compelling for charter schools outperforming the local public school. You may have read in the paper, I think it was last week, because it got quite a bit of attention, but Chicago attempted to close three charter schools down, and were not meeting their performance standards, and the Charter School Commission overruled the CPS, the City of Chicago, because of some notification timelines to the charter company. So again, some compelling, you know, factors there. But I think we're just going to have to monitor that, and I will most likely be at the hearings in support of North Chicago, as well as a number of other superintendents from Lake County, including the contiguous districts. So the message to take away is that all the districts that surround North Chicago are supportive of North Chicago, and we're going to try and work together to see if we can support them continuing forward as a school district, because the downside for the kids of North Chicago, as well as the contiguous districts, is very difficult. North Chicago has $65 million of long-term bond debt, 65 million. And so if the district were broken up, decisions would have to be made about how that debt's going to be paid, because that debt is not going to be waived, there are bondholders there. So however the district is annexed up, part of that conversation is going to be how do you deal with that long-term debt of the four districts, five districts, I missed Wattegan, which is a K-12 unit district to the far north. So, you know, there are some significant things here kind of coming down the pike, so we'll keep you updated on that. Okay, as the board will note, you had three FOIA, we had three FOIA requests since our last meeting, and Pat, I think that is it. Oh. Yeah, capital projects, I'm sorry, I missed that. The board will be voting tonight on the consent agenda for an RFP, Request for Proposal, for a construction management firm to work with the district architect and pool designer to look at doing more detailed planning on the proposed pool at Libertyville High School. And that will really be the first step forward, so we can get some more definitive numbers that we can share with you from the more best estimate numbers that we had before. Again, the capital projects are really four pieces that the district is looking at over, really, 10 years of planning. The first and most important is the pool at LHS. The pool was built in 1971. It's a 25-yard, and I think we probably have some swimming parents here tonight, it's 25 yards long, it's very narrow. The minimum pool that's being built today is 40 yards, and probably eight to 10 lanes. And so it no longer services the needs that we have in physical education, the needs that we have in our competitive swim program and our water polo program, also in our community swim program, which will include our partnership with CAS Aquatics, our senior swim for senior citizens, and our learn-to-swim programs moving forward. And the amount of bathers that we're putting in that pool every day for the volume of water we have in there is frankly much higher than is acceptable and that it should be. The other piece, because of the age of the pool, it's very expensive to maintain. Those who are better with the pool know that the pool developed a crack almost in the bottom, almost after it was opened, you know, 30-some years ago, 40-some years ago. That crack has been repaired, but, you know, we are continually losing water from that pool, which is also an expense. So the location we're looking for right now is in the front of the building, which is up around the west gym or the newer gym at Libertyville High School, which will give us a second area that's kind of an athletic-oriented area. We'll also do some site development in that area, which would include taking down the old district office, rerouting the road to go around the pool, rerouting the entrance over by the old district office, putting retention in on what we call the grassy knoll, which is between the softball field and kind of the district, the old district office building. And the board has asked us, O'Brien did this in his presentation to the board when we had our last meeting, but we'll break that, the two costs out. So the cost for the pool, and then the cost for the site development, we'll look roughly, and I'll give you a more definitive number the next time we meet in committee, but roughly we're looking at 16 and a half to 17 million for the pool, and about $2.5 million for the site development. It's important to keep that in mind. And what was recommended, it was a 50-meter stretch pool that would also allow us some side-to-side use in that pool, and that would meet the needs. So the board asked us to, what we needed to take the next step, the next step is the Request for Proposal for the construction manager, that's a bid, you know, kind of a proposal bid process moving forward, and then we'll review that. At the end of that, I'll come to you with a recommendation for pool construction management. Then they'll start in earnest to work with the drawings, that kind of working drawings that we have right now, to detail that. Pat and I have talked on a couple of occasions, and the committee did a lot of value engineering, just so you know, on those, both versions of the pool, the 50-meter and the 40-meter. And when we get to a point that we're ready to present again some firmer numbers in detail, then Brian can review again some of the value engineering that was done on that. We, you know, there may be more to do, or we may be in a really good place moving forward. So that's number one on the list. Second one is the second gym at Vernon Hills High School to continue to meet the needs of their physical education classes and their athletic programs and their dance facility. The gym at Vernon Hills would be a two-story gym. The steel in the front of the building and the locker room that we added in preparation for this, probably eight years ago, was built to hold a second floor. First floor would be a, kind of like the west gym at Libertyville, just a basic gym, not a. not a finished, big competition gym like our main gyms. And then the second floor of that building would be dance cardio slash weight areas moving forward, and we can make the utilization of the space. And that would be in the front of the building, front of this building, right? Kind of go out the door and look to your left, and that's where the gym would be moving at that point. So, that would be the second project. If we do the pool at Libertyville High School, the board approves that, which we hope they will at some point down the line, then we will need to repurpose the old pool at Libertyville High School, because we can't have any space, we need usable space at Libertyville High School. And that repurposed facility in concept would be dropping a floor over where the pool is now, doing some additional inside work, some locker room work there, and would allow us to have, again, dance cardio, potentially weight space at Libertyville High School. And people, some people have asked me, well, why do we need space for dance? In the 11 years that I've been in this district, okay, the dance programs at both high schools through physical education, plus our competition teams, our POMs, our cheerleaders, orchestras, have exploded, and we do not have enough space. So, we've got our dance kids, if you will, moving all around the building at different times of year, because we don't have specific dedicated space that can handle that on a regular basis, although we did some alternatives to just pour us this sugar in. We did some alternatives at Libertyville High School that have helped us along the way. Now, number four-
That means they're dancing in the cafeteria?
Yes, they're dancing in the cafeteria on a mondo floor with some, with some sponge padding under it, some special flooring, which is better than the concrete. But I know, John, from time to time, they, they have their, dance students are, you know, may be in the lobby, they may be on a hard floor in a field house, so not the best situation. The fourth of the projects along is property procurement across from Libertyville High School, across 176 from Libertyville High School. And that includes the, what we refer to as a nursery property, which is about two-thirds of a regulation field that we use for practice over there. Several years back, the district bought one of the houses across the street and took it down. Several months ago, we bought a second house in that run of houses from the nursery property to the apartment buildings. And at some point in the near future, we'll be taking that property down as well. And the long-term design would be to acquire those properties by contacting the owners if they're at a point that they want to make, sell, or when they contact us. And Rick, as one of our attorneys that works for the district, has been very diligent in terms of contacting owners of the properties. So, our recommendation, of course, is anytime we have an opportunity to buy those properties, when we get the remaining houses on that block, then we have the option for some additional green space or tennis courts across the street, because that is really the last buildable property that we're going to be able to obtain around Libertyville High School. So, how are we going to pay for all that? I saw somebody's hand go up and say, how are we going to pay for all that? The answer is that after our early taxes come in, and we get a high point of $120 or $130 million in reserves at that point, when our early taxes come in and they're spent out to pay our budget for the year, we end up with approximately $88 million. We've been able to those numbers with the board a number of times over the last two years, and I think, you know, we've got concurrence that we're around $88 million at the low point once the early taxes are spent. For really the last 10 years, we've worked, Alex really brought a model in, and helped us to develop the model for a 10-year rolling financial and capital plan. And that's been wildly successful for us, and we live by that document, the updates on the document, to tell us what we need to do in capital, as well as our financial decisions. But what we discovered a couple of years ago was probably a sweet spot, where our bonds would be paid off, and we had some reserves, and we have some long-term capital needs, including those that I've talked about this evening and for the last few months. And the result of that is it will allow the board to consider using reserves to take care of all of those capital needs without asking the taxpayers for one additional dollar for capital projects through referendum. So, it's really a very unique opportunity that we're in to look at addressing those long-term capital needs, which will really take the district forward, you know, probably the next 30 to 50 years, in the district with regular maintenance and, you know, taking care of the additions that we'll make. So, it's important that the community knows that the board will not be going out to referendum for the capital projects. The board, however, will look at all financing options, including paying off, all of it with reserves. We have AAA bond rating, and interest rates are very low. So, the board would also take a look at maybe a combination of reserves and maybe doing some bonding, but using our reserves to pay off the bonds. So, again, we've not required additional funds for the taxpayer. The other thing that underscores all of this is, over the last five years, the board has abated $16.5 million in taxes. What does that mean? That means we haven't collected $16.5 million that the board could have collected under a levy to pay our bonds off. And we've done that after a lot of study and a lot of conversation on that. In addition, last year, the board reduced the tax rate $2.5 million. So, the board is, in essence, abated $18.5 million over the last five years. Through some looking around that we've done, we believe it's the single largest property tax abatement in the history of state Illinois, by a property taxing body. So, the board takes very seriously its fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, and as a result of that, we've been able to kind of do a mix of things and still look at moving the district forward and keeping healthy enough reserves that whatever happens at the state level, which could go from relatively minor to very significant, and we don't know where that's going to end up, but we should be able to weather the storm in the short term. So, short of that, that's the update on where we're at with capital projects.
Just one quick correction on that. The, excuse me, the RFP is actually part of the-
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
We're not voting on that.
I actually wondered what that was, but then I realized.
Okay, well, I got you all to look at your agenda then, didn't I? So, okay.
And one quick clarification on the FOIA. Are those all done now? They were due, I think, on Friday. Two of the last two are still out. Good.
Okay. Pat, that concludes our superintendent's report.
Thank you. All right.
Yes. Too much talking about capital projects, thanks for the reminder. Okay, we do have a couple of donations, and we always like to highlight those. We'd like to thank Goodman Family Foundation and acknowledge them for a $6,000 grant in support of drug and alcohol prevention programs at Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School for this school year. This grant was received in two payments dated February, September 5th and February 8th. So, thank you so much to Goodman Foundation. And we'd also like to thank Mr. Keith Stephens, and we'd like to acknowledge his receipt, our receipt of his donation of an eight-inch computerized reflecting telescope to be used by the science department at Vernon Hills High School. So, we're appreciative to Keith and his wife, who's also one of our department supervisors at Vernon Hills High School, Cheryl. So, and Pat, now, I think that concludes the superintendent's report.
Well, this, the grant just triggered something in my mind. The EKG screening program, which upon a time was a grant receivable, right? And are we still, that program is still going on, right? Okay, but we're still going there. I thought we were.
They do that every other, every other year.
They pay the offset fee. They pay some of the way.
Right. Now, it's a offset fee.
Now, the Goodman Grant, is that going to an existing program, or is that a new program we're going to do?
We've been receiving this grant for a number of years since this was launched.
Okay, all right. All right. Done, done?
Okay, done, done.
Okay. Anyone from the public who would like to speak? Okay. Don't worry about it. All right. Okay, so, I promise you guys, we will be fairly quick through the rest of this.
We see some-
Always conscious of your time, I know what your calendars look like, so.
We're thinking about spring break, don't worry about it.
That's true. All right. The consent vote agenda is listed, we reviewed that last week in committee, so I don't believe there's any dissent. We're going to ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as well.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Jackson.
Aye.
Jolly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Winstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Program of personnel, chair, person.
Okay, we first have the 2016-17 ombudsman contract up for renewal. Here's a 2% increase this year, which is good, so we motion to approve the contract for next year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Jolly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Winstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Okay, next, we have our 2015-16 amended school calendar, and it was amended due to some test dates that we needed to add, subtract, change. So, we motion to approve the amended school calendar for this year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Winstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have two educational tour requests to approve. It's working for motion to approve those. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Luce.
Aye.
Winstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Jolly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Winstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Jolly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Winstead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes the report.
So, you did a really great job with that. Took us a while, I don't really have to do that in committee, just so you know.
That's because it took me so long to go through yours.
Okay, so these are my last committee.
Okay, thank you. We have two items here. The first one is the 2016 masonry restoration project, a bid recommendation. Looks like it's a base bid plus a alternate. We have some quick background on that.
Yes, we propose, proposed motion by the Board of Education that the board accept a proposal from Murtees Contracting Corporation of Brockview, Illinois, for the total combined bid amount of $636,500 for the 2016 masonry restoration projects at Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School. Background, we had nine contractors at the pre-bid meeting, and we received nine bids for the projects. The apparent low bidder for Libertyville High School, base bid number one, is MBB Enterprises with a bid amount of $208,000. When base bid number one and alternate, and number one for Libertyville High School combined, Murtees Contracting Corporation is the apparent low bidder with a combined amount of $361,500. Murtees Contracting Corporation is the low bidder for Vernon Hills High School, base bid number two, for the amount of $275,000. And the cost to complete these projects, projects is under our budgeted amount.
So, this is preventative maintenance on both, for both buildings, to make sure that they both stay up to speed. And since it was under, we did intend to do both the base and the alternate if it came in under our, so hence the process there, so.
I make a motion that we approve the bid and award it to Murtees Contracting. Second.
Any further questions, comments?
I noticed SDR said they haven't worked with these guys before, but does anybody know, I mean, they said they, okay, we'd still be okay.
Yes, they check references with them.
Roll call, please.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Jolly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Winstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Jolly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Winstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Jolly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Winstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Jolly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Winstead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes the report.
So, you did a really great job with that. Took us a while, I don't really have to do that in committee, just so you know.
That's because it took me so long to go through yours.
Okay, so these are my last committee.
Okay, thank you. We have two items here. The first one is the 2016 masonry restoration project, a bid recommendation. Looks like it's a base bid plus a alternate. We have some quick background on that.
Yes, we propose, proposed motion by the Board of Education that the board accept a proposal from Murtees Contracting Corporation of Brockview, Illinois, for the total combined bid amount of $636,500 for the 2016 masonry restoration projects at Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School. Background, we had nine contractors at the pre-bid meeting, and we received nine bids for the projects. The apparent low bidder for Libertyville High School, base bid number one, is MBB Enterprises with a bid amount of $208,000. When base bid number one and alternate, and number one for Libertyville High School combined, Murtees Contracting Corporation is the apparent low bidder with a combined amount of $361,500. Murtees Contracting Corporation is the low bidder for Vernon Hills High School, base bid number two, for the amount of $275,000. And the cost to complete these projects, projects is under our budgeted amount.
So, this is preventative maintenance on both, for both buildings, to make sure that they both stay up to speed. And since it was under, we did intend to do both the base and the alternate if it came in under our, so hence the process there, so.
I make a motion that we approve the bid and award it to Murtees Contracting. Second.
Any further questions, comments?
I noticed SDR said they haven't worked with these guys before, but does anybody know, I mean, they said they, okay, we'd still be okay.
Yes, they check references with them.
Roll call, please.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Jolly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Winstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Jolly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Winstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Jolly Polly.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Luce.
Aye.
Winstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
And the second item here is the approval, the approval to go forward with an RFP, to develop an RFP for the construction manager for the pool at Libertyville.
So what is this supposed to, roll call.
Go ahead. Yes, why don't you give us all that? How does this work?
What are we actually going out for? Are they going to scope out this project? There's a, what's, tell me.
Basically, the purpose is to develop a request proposal for construction management companies to submit their proposal as to, we're going to identify the three projects that have been discussed by Dr. Lee here, to say these are the projects that we're looking for a construction manager to manage for us. Options would be that either we do one, two, three, or all three of them, and to get a free structure, whether it's a percent of the total estimate or whether it's a fixed price, and to provide us in a sort of biography of the team members who will be working on these projects for us and the background.
Okay, so-
So this is basically we're creating an RFP.
Creating RFP. Yes. So this purpose is-
You're tired.
Once those are received, once again, this is an RFP, so it is not a bid, so we can look at different ones, even though they may not be the lowest ones, we can look at all of them and determine who is best suited for our projects.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to go out to a whole bunch of people that build stuff and say, we want you guys to come and manage these projects for us.
And we have done that for the construction process here. When we built this high school, we had a construction manager, whoever was here, and a member, Bois was doing it for us at that time. So we've been through that similar situation before.
All right, but this one is a little bit different in a sense. All right, we have three or four projects teed up that we are considering.
Right.
We have one that is in a more advanced stage, okay? That we're saying we actually do want to go out and start to scope that out and put some more meat on the bones.
Right.
Okay. But what are we, how are we going to write this proposal for this firm? I mean-
Are they going to be done three independently?
Well-
It'll have, similar to what we're doing with add-ons to our bids, we'll have something like that, that will say, well, project number one, which is, as you said, in a more advanced planning stage, is the pool, followed very closely by the gymnasium because most of the footwork on that is done too. We'll be sharing that with you in a week, in a month's time. And then the repurposing is the one that is really going to be far out, so.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. These projects could go three years or more.
Three years, yeah.
Do these guys?
I just was wondering if it'd be more efficient to do these one at a time versus-
We can do it one at a time too, but what could happen is that perhaps the pool project and the gymnasium project could be happening very close to each other, then you have two different groups if that happens to deal with too.
You're not committing them to all the projects right now.
No, it is just asking them for pricing.
You're looking for their rate structures and how they would bill the, over the course of this.
Correct.
So at some point, knowing the most favorable rate structure to our district, we would go with, we would take that company and we'd make a decision later whether, how far we took them, right?
That's correct, yes.
So-
Just want permission for the RFP, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're creating the RFP.
We're going to request a proposal for one.
For construction management services from various groups who have experience to do the projects that they have done, as well as in the educational area.
But wouldn't we expect these guys, I mean, if you're going to do one project, I might give you a certain proposal, but if you're going to bundle it as part of three, I might give you a different proposal because of the duration.
Well, that's, that's really why you've got A, B, and C.
Right, yes, that's why you break it up.
So A would be the pool, B would be the gym, C would be we're able to see the old pool, which, you know, we can't do until we open the new pool anyway.
But I'm not sure that I see a side up for a deal that would-
Could have one.
Two or more projects.
It wouldn't, but it's just for us to get an idea of what the cost could be if we did all three projects outside of just the building cost, the architectural fees, because right now the construction management portion is a question mark.
This could be a bid we never award.
It could be.
The construction budget.
We need to get an idea of-
But it's not a bid, right?
It's not a bid, it's a-
It's a professional services, right?
Yes.
Right, yeah. It's a professional services contract.
And who are we looking at? Is it Ragnar Benson, like, Neil Pepper Construction?
Whoever, it's Ilmae, it's Bois, it's, you know, a number of other companies.
This gets published and it's whoever responds.
They've contacted us and have told us, when you go out for this particular proposal, we would like to receive a copy of it. So we are developing a list of companies that are interested in submitting a, you know, proposal on this.
Okay. All right, I said we get too far ahead. We get the pool moving, but don't we get too far ahead of ourselves?
No, but I think this is not going to be a short-term thing. It's going to take us at least a month to six weeks to develop it, release it, get those back. So by the time you're looking at this, you're looking at May, June, July, somewhere there.
Yeah, we'll try and keep this going, so if we can make it May, you know, we'll-
Oh, definitely, yes.
It all would not be, kind of be in August, since we're, we want to keep taking steps forward. But again, you're not committing to, you know, hire anybody for one, two, or three projects. So first one would be the pool. It'll give us an idea, if somebody were to, wanted to do all three, what that would look like, or if they wanted to do A and B, okay, but not C because repurposing all pools is not their cup of tea in terms of doing that. But then we can take a look at that, we can make a decision about, you know, how we want to move forward.
So they would be given the option to bid on one or bid on all three?
We'd like an alternate.
But it's not really a bid.
It's not a bid.
It almost seems like RFP here, I mean, it's not really an RFP.
It's an RFP.
It is.
It's a proposal, basically.
It sounds to me like a dog and pony show where they're going to come and tell us what their capabilities are and they're going to give us some idea of what their fee structure is.
Yeah, and that's exactly what's important, not only the dog and pony, you know their capabilities, but the actual fee structure.
They could say, we get 1% of construction or something like that.
Right.
That's how it normally is. With the number of school districts, either planning referendums or have been successful in planning, or having referendums passed in our building now, have contacted them to see how the process worked for them and to get some idea of what the fee structure was that they've been working with.
And there have been five, for example, swimming pools, there have been at least four pools built here in the last 18 months in our neck of the woods. So, you know, we've, we've got ample opportunity to check on construction manager. And then Mike Henderson and SDR will still be our lead architects here and they'll be a pool design group to go work with.
And you have a name in school that does all the construction, uses a construction manager for most of the projects.
Is this going to be a design build type there? Are we going to get one person to design it and someone else to build it?
No, our architect and pool designer will do that. This will be a construction manager will work with them.
Right, but the thing, once you get in, I'll call it, once you get a bid with a, with a construction manager, you tend to flow with them, they know your systems, you know, you really tend to want to stick with them. So this is a very important step in the whole process to decide who we want to marry up with and stay with for several years. And if they don't work out, you know, it's not like we're going to hire another construction manager for the next set of projects necessarily. We could, but it would have to be, you probably want to find a really good reason for why this isn't working out and why you want to jump to somebody else because, because of how entwined, how much part of our staff they become.
Yeah, but kind of the spirit of this thing would be, we have a pool we want you guys to build and, oh, by the way, it goes really well. We got some other stuff for you too. Right, that's how I see it.
Yes. Okay.
That's a good way to look at it.
And just to be clear, what we're voting on tonight is just the-
The creation.
The creation of the RFP. So we're, we're asking the district to create the RFP.
Is there expenditure funds here on the draw?
No, no.
It's just-
You have to authorize the creation.
Most of the work is going to, most of the work is going to be done by the business office, obviously.
So we're committing resources in terms of your time.
Right, and just making sure that you're okay with us having that proposal.
I just want to clarify, because as far as I can see, we're not, we're not authorizing any significant expenditure fund.
Exactly.
At this point, it's zero.
When you-
But also, because it's your valuable time.
Well, time is a thing, yes.